Okay, I'm gonna start the meeting, call the meeting to order at six thirty-four. And it's a roll call attendance, I'm here, Lindsay's here. Steven's here, David's here, and our associate member Roger Hoyt is here. This meeting is the normal notification since nobody from the public's here, I don't need to repeat here other than to add that the meeting's being recorded. And the recorded meetup, somebody's coming here, here's Lindsay coming in again. There she is.
Okay, I'm gonna leave you to it, Walt.
Okay, thank you, meetings being recorded. Lindsay, can you hear us?
Yes, I apologize, I don't know what's going on with my computer, I had to jump on on my phone.
No, that's okay, that's that's quite all right. We just called the meeting to order and everybody's in attendance and I was just letting everybody know that the meeting's being recorded. And that the the recorded minutes will be the official record, but written minutes will be prepared for easier reference to the topics covered in the actions taken. And since we don't have anybody here from the public, I don't have to give them, tell them to keep their their computers on mute, please. I have no chairman chairman comments. And our purpose here is really the A and R for twenty Murray Road and I think Rebecca's reaching out to them right now to find out where they were. Dave Perry did say he spoke with Grass Engineering earlier today to ask them some questions. And they said that they they were going to be here, so they could show up any minute. I have to admit people into this meeting, so.
Graz Engineering said their computer shut down and they should be getting on any second now, so they should be waiting room soon.
Oh, fantastic, so in the meantime, we'll wait for them to do it and we'll start to do some of the other, I'll jump to old business and then we can come back to the hearing once they show up. I did let our, first off, the OSRP notes, I did share our comments. The ones I sent to you over the weekend. I shared them with MRPC. They acknowledged that they received them. Select Board met yesterday and they have put their comments together, although I haven't seen them. And the OSRC, Open Space and Recreation Committee is meeting tonight to put their final comments together and probably to comment on our comments, but we'll see what comes from that. We have a call next week with Jeff. And the chairs of the Select Board and the OSRC, I have a call which is gonna basically resolve if there's any sort of conflicts in the in the notes that we've given. MRC, PC has agreed to publish the final iteration after our comments are all incorporated on March twenty ninth. Which will start a twenty-one day comment period for the OSRP. I want to make sure I don't forget, miss them coming in and you know, we'll, we'll need to the public meeting will be April nineteenth, or yes, April nineteenth for their formal presentation and Rebecca, I'll be turning you to put out the appropriate notices for that meeting once, once we publish the document on March twenty ninth. And the whole idea is that the final OSRP report will be submitted to the state at the end of April, at least that's what we're pushing for right now. So that's where we are on OSRP. With regards to the master plan, I copied you all on the email that I sent to Karen. I copied it to the Planning Board account, not to all of you individually. But Karen responded to that. They're fine with it. They are saying that they need a little bit more time on the housing chapter and the housing production plan. Those two things we're gonna, I'm just gonna push in the schedule to to do sort of the next, I've kind of divided the plans up into four, four phases. And the first phase is what we started at the last meeting, which was economic development, transportation and, and facilities. Facilities and services. That's sort of the phase one, the next phase is going to be I can't remember, it's the cultural chapter. And the housing chapter and the housing production plan is being moved to go with land use in the schedule that I sent out. And then the final chapters will be this summer, the whole goal is I'm trying to push this to get done by the end of the calendar year. So with that adjustment, Karen Chapman agreed to it. And Karen will Karen is scheduled to and it's been agreed to that Karen will make a brief ten-minute report at the town meeting, which will basically inform the town, the town folks of of the master plan process, why it's important and where we are in it, so I think we're in a good place there. So, but the, the last thing and I'll need to talk to you Rebecca offline on this. But the town's internal initial comments from the town departments, committees, boards and commissions on economic development, transportation and the facilities and services chapters will be due back to, to MRPC April fourteenth. So we're gonna probably want to nudge them along next week and make sure they're doing it, that will give them a full four weeks to to respond and it would should be enough time. Because if we don't meet our deadlines, then there's, we don't have a prayer of getting MRPC to meet their deadlines. So I think we, we want to really play, play a role and do our part as we can. Did you say Rebecca that Ed on Bray Ave, that Ed was gonna have a representative here tonight?
He wrote and said he might. But I think he, I think he sent an email an hour or two ago and said that that person wouldn't be able to be there and he forwarded the two documents that you previously, that I previously sent to you on the
Okay.
Not the receipts, it's the
Yes, it's two invoices.
Yeah, the invoices.
You know, the nutshell of it all, and how much of this was shared to the Planning Board account? Does every, has everybody seen this or is this just me?
For a second Walt, if I could interrupt you for just a minute.
Paul Grass is coming in, yes, go ahead Dave.
I just got a message from Graz Engineering, it looked like he said he wasn't having too much luck with getting into the Zoom meeting, but that might have changed in the last thirty seconds, he might have kept trying.
I just, I just accepted him, okay.
Good, 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 that means he did.
I just accepted him, but he didn't, he did, he's not showing up, so, but of course, there is a seventh here. Let me see. He's joining now, it's so he's supposedly joining now and it, I just accepted him. And Will obviously, when he does join, we'll jump right there. But to finish the comments that I was saying about Ed McSweeney. He has sent two invoices which total about thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. There's still sixteen thousand two hundred dollars left in the past book account. He's asking for the release of those funds. I asked for him to put it to us in a formal letterhead and you know, in a, in a, in a formal request. Rebecca, have you received that formal request?
If I could.
I have not received a formal request. It's been an interesting conversation with him where he said, we don't have a letterhead and I said, oh, well, just put it on the to the Planning Board and sign it at the bottom and he hasn't responded to that.
Okay, okay, but he's, he's essentially asking for that. He did come.
He sent us an email that had all of the information in it. And I said, I'll just use that information and give us a an intro and a signed by you at the bottom and.
Yeah, all, you know, I just don't, I mean, I don't like to be overly bureaucratic, but in these kinds of cases where we're releasing funds, I want him to formally ask it. Unfortunately, Paul just, he, they weren't successful in joining even though I did accept him. But the bottom line is, is on, yes, Roger.
Just when you, when you finish your same, I just have a comment on that.
No, I was just gonna say, there's still but in terms of whether we release the funds yet, I think we have to ask ourselves the question if we feel that there's still enough incentive for him to finish, put the whole package together and finish the job for the town to vote on at a town meeting. He's told us in our, his meeting, when he came to us, that he was oops, I'm gonna try again. I just accepted Paul again, see if he joins. I said to, you know, what, what we, I forgot, I lost my train of thought. Why didn't, why didn't you, Roger, go on and make your?
Oh, it's just exactly what you were saying, the most important part is not so much what he paid for the work that's done, it invoices, it's what's left is sufficient to cover the remaining items, it doesn't matter how much he pays, it's a matter of what's left.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, and Rebecca, that might be a good thing to present to him to just say, yeah, we're okay, you know, we can pay these invoices, but that only leaves a couple of thousand dollars left in the account. And is that enough to finish? He has to answer the question, is that enough to finish the job? And, you know, to satisfactorily finish the job.
And it should itemize the cost, the value of each item.
Yeah.
So he did send that information. It was just in an email and I could throw that email into a Word document and present that if you want to look at it this, during this meeting.
No, we don't need to look at it this meeting, put it in, put it in that form, I've got that email, I finally, I found it. Just put that in a, in a form. You know, from him and then send it to him and say, you know, sign this, you know, that this is what you, this is what you're, this is what we want. And express and tell and advise him to express confidence that he's going to be able to finish the job. And, and it even would be advisable to make sure that his other commitments that he gave to us verbally at that meeting. He's letting the board know that he's preparing the package to go to town meeting. You know, it, he's, I, 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 like I said, I, I don't like to be overly bureaucratic, but this is pretty important, we're accepting the subdivision, we're accepting the road, we're accepting a lot of liability and I think we have to try to do it right. He needs to, you know, at least give us the basics of what we need to have a good public record of what happened. Okay?
I agree.
Alright, so folks, that unfortunately, Paul struck out again. He, he was on and it just kept saying, joining, 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 and for some reason he isn't joining. Will. So that's that is pretty much the other thing, item I had on my list for us to talk about is that I am writing up the annual report, I hope to have it to you tonight. But I, I don't, I still have to do my accumulations of number of A and Rs and site plan reviews and all the stuff that we did this last year. I'll put some comments on the open space and recreate, open space and recreation work that we're doing in the master plan work. And I'll add that to it and I'm gonna just pass it out to you, send it all out to you to, you know, look at and just reply to me directly with any suggested edits. And we can get it officially approved at the next, at the next meeting. It's only two pages or three pages as it was last year. And, you know, the first part is just what we do and who's on the board and what changes have happened, the fact that Larry Boudreaux has stepped off and, you know. And what are all our terms are and all of that kind of stuff. So that finishes that part of it. Okay, here, let me see, admit, I'm trying to admit Paul again. Cause I sure would like to get this A and R done.
We might need to get Heather back on the call and maybe if Heather admitted.
Can you, you have Heather's number?
Yeah, I'll see if she can.
I mean, I'm accepted and so I don't know what she could do that I haven't already done. So he's still trying to do.
Could he call in?
He could choose a calling number. The, the, if he looks at the if, do you have his number, Dave?
No, I would have to, I, I have.
It's on his form, it's on the form. Yeah.
Yeah, it should be on the plan.
Yeah, let me see, I can pull a form up. I didn't, I didn't ready myself, here comes Paul now. Here he is, good. Paul, are you on? Paul? We see you on. Well, this is a a big failure. Come on, Paul.
Two-step process, he's probably like, there's a link and then the passcode, he's probably not punching one of them in.
No, you shouldn't have to do the passcode. Okay, here he is.
There's the meeting.
Now I actually have a face.
Excellent. On mute.
Are you on mute, Paul? I can't, we can't hear you, we can see you, but we can't hear you.
There isn't a mute icon by his face, so it might be that he needs to adjust his sound settings.
Yeah.
Oh, now there's a mute icon.
Asked.
Now there's not a mute icon, try saying something.
It's going on and off.
On the bottom left side of your screen, next to the mute or unmute. You can, there's a little up arrow. And if you clip, click that on the mute, you can select a microphone. And you can also select a speaker system. Wonder, maybe it will let me share my screen. Oh. That's not good. I'm sorry. That didn't work.
Well, well, Paul, you're halfway there. If you can hear us, nod. I don't even think he can hear us.
When is the, what is the timeframe up for this, Walt, you said it was time sensitive?
Yeah, A and Rs, we have roughly twenty-one days to review them and this has been in for about ten days, ten, fourteen days, we, you know, we, we do not have enough time to push it off to the next meeting, which is why I opted to have this special meeting. Most of the, everything else we were gonna do at this meeting, I was going to just push off now. I do have one question for Rebecca. Did all the bylaw stuff get posted?
Yes.
And is it on, I couldn't find it on the website.
Oh. Let me double check that. It is posted in newspaper, it was sent to all of the neighboring towns.
Okay.
So, but I will check and make sure it got posted on the website.
Did it go to the other three parties that or did it get notified?
Which parties, what are you talking about?
Like MRPC and
Yes.
You know. Okay, there's like four, I think that we have to require.
There are seven that we have to send it to.
The towns, but then as far as there's towns, there's MRPC, there's DCHG, I think, and there may be one.
But the big thing is, is you, the, the paper copy of the bylaws that people can look at what's changing, has to be prominently posted on our website and it's not now. So if you could take care of that tomorrow, that would be great.
Okay. I can do that.
So Paul, can you hear us now? I, I see your mouth moving, but I don't, we don't hear anything from you. So he can hear us now, that's a good, that's, we're, we're almost there now. Step three is, we can have to be able to hear him.
How's that?
Yeah, there you go.
So, so Paul, are you able to post your plan? Boy, you really have bad reception.
Usually fantastic and I turned up didn't want to update, I had let it, I didn't have any choice.
Oh, wow.
It's not working like it usually works great.
Yeah. Well, you've done it before in front of us. There you go. Is this Rebecca's screen? Can you increase the size of it, there we go. Okay. Paul, if you can tell us what you're gonna, what you're doing. Gotta flip it around, it's upside down.
But you're seeing, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we're seeing it.
Okay, good.
There you go.
So there's an existing house on the, I'll be the west side, I guess, of Murray Road. Number twenty, owned by Cormier. And would proposing to create seven A and R lots, the zoning district on his properties.
These are seven A and R lights along Murray Road.
Lot one for lot seven. He proposed lot lines come back perpendicular from the roadway. Lots of different sizes, well, to do wetlands and do a tree, as you go further south. As you can see, the property is a big, kind of a high-shaped thing, so we've got lots of depth over on the, the north end, on the left end, and then it gets narrower as we go to the right, so. Lot seven's got, you know, five hundred and thirty feet of frontage. But only fifty-six thousand square feet of area, so. So lots the area govern and on some of these lots, few of these lots, the the frontage govern, but they're also, gave the house number twenty seven thousand square feet. Just because of the stream there and he's got a shed.
Okay. So all the lots have appropriate frontage. All the lots have a square footage, although I, what's the zoning in that along that area?
Frontage. One, one fifty's are a residential A.
Residential A.
Yeah.
So that allows a fifty you know, a lot of, just over an acre. Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any questions that they want to start asking, Paul?
This is good, this has got to go to what, zoning, conservation?
No. Go ahead.
We have to go into zoning, but we do need, we also filed a simplified LID plan. Well, because of the of your bylaw. They had to design a lot of stormwater elements in here. Rain gardens, tension basin, dry wells, roof rough. Things like that, we've got a few lots there and there and on buffer, so. This is gonna be, I should mention that this can be serviced by low-pressure sewer. So these lots are not gonna have seppics. Four of them will be wells for water and three of them will be water services from the road. But it's gonna be a low-pressure sewer. We've already, we've submitted plans to the sewer and met with them. Okay, watch my screen. You still hearing?
Yeah, yeah, we can. You, 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 you got the outline of the road up there and you got your mark, so you're moving the, your scroll, there you go, you're marking it again, yeah, it's clear.
As I can see you though.
That's a, that's my screen that I'm showing the sewer.
Oh, okay.
That might be useful to you.
Yeah.
I think first off, let's, let's simplify this and I'm gonna defer a little bit to Roger to make sure I'm doing this right. The A and R is simply our verifying that for the zoned area, the lots you're proposing are being divided into acceptable lots that are bylaws accept, meaning they have adequate square footage, adequate frontage. And those things which everybody has a right to do. The second step of this will be the LID thing, and that we're going to have on the next agenda because there's a timing issue that you have to you have to, or Rebecca has already sent out this, the LID application to other town departments like DPW and, and other commissions like Conservation Commission and so forth. And they are, they're, they have an opportunity to comment on this. And then, so we weren't able to put the LID application on this on this agenda. But because of the time sensitivity of a filed A and R, we have to we have to, um, respond, or we, to be responsible anyway, the planning board needs to respond and say, um, uh, this does meet the, um, uh, it does conform to our bylaws for subdividing a lot, and we don't have, uh, and, and, and we agree that it's acceptable. Uh, is that said right, Roger?
That's exactly it, Walt, yes.
Um, Walt, is there a, is there any options for an extension of this? I, I know that if the zoning board is having a hearing for a variance and we're running out of time, if the applicant asks for an extension, the zoning board can vote and grant that. It can, does the planning board have the, um, the, the authority and the, does it follow within the scope of the authority of the planning board to grant an extension if we're running out of time for an A and R? Or is the fourteen days etched in concrete and there's no way we can extend it?
It, it's pretty much, it, it, it pretty much, um, is, um, something that we cannot do that. However, we did do it once where the applicant said, I'm fine pushing this off to, you know, the next meeting. But technically, um, they, you know, they don't have to agree to that. And it's more of a handshake than it is a, um, uh, something official. In other words, we don't write him a letter and say, you know, I think the last time I did this, um, Debbie Phillips said that what we did really didn't have any.
Yeah, the, the, the zoning board can't do that, only the applicant can.
Yeah.
They, they have to ask for an extension, and if we vote to grant it, we could do it. I was wondering if it was the same.
Yeah, I, I would imagine if, yeah, if, 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 uh, Paul were to ask us to do this, we could do it. Now, why would we want him to do this?
Uh, I can only hear about a third of what he's saying. And, um, my, uh, my situation here is about to get really loud. My, uh, two grandsons are climbing back into their car. Rapidly get harder and harder for me to focus, you know, I can only multitask to a degree.
Yeah. No, that's, uh, that, that's quite all right. We wish we had not had to move this meeting, but we did. Um, because of the weather. Um, anyway, I, from my perspective.
I got one, uh, one thought on Dave's, to Dave's point.
Yep, go ahead.
Can we adjourn the meeting and then take it up at a future date?
Well, like I said, there's a time limit on us signing.
Would that give us the, the extension that we're looking for, apparently?
Uh, no, it doesn't necessarily, it would have to come from Paul as a request.
All right.
I think Walt, what you said previously of conversation with Debbie is that it's, you know, we have our twenty-one days to make the determination whether it's a subdivision process or, or not, and um, there aren't a lot of criteria
Yeah.
to consider.
It's, yeah. Unfortunately, I mean, this is almost like a subdivision, but one, if you're on a road that's already a public road. Um, right, the A and R process, which is what they're doing, they're essentially creating a subdivision, but it's a, it's, it's a, a row of houses on one side of the road is what it is.
And I think we can see from the LID application and the plan here that he's kinda figured out access.
Yeah.
That seems to be indicated and resolved. It is a town road, so the condition of the road isn't an issue.
Yeah.
Russ, at this point, you know, in terms of an A and R, it's a condition for everybody who lives on it.
But, um, it, it, it is, it is, it does qualify as an A and R, as far as I can say. You're agreeing with that, Roger?
I I would say that's the case, and, you know, um, again, twenty-one days, it's that's the timeframe and.
Looking at it this way, look, looking at it this way, what would what would bounce it out is not being an A and R. Is there anything glaring at us?
Nope. And there's, this is definitely.
Subdivision qualification, what qualifies, well, why would this become a, a subdivision?
The subdivision control act was designed to, uh, prevent housing along people just creating housing out of areas that didn't have any roads or any real roads to them. Um.
Well, I think that's your answer in a nutshell.
That's right. That's right. This is an A and R. I'm, I'm convinced it is.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I, we, we would sign off on this, then, then the LID application that they have in would be dealt as a separate matter at the next, at the next meeting when we've had an opportunity to collect the comments from other, other town departments and boards and commissions.
Right. The only question that, the only thing that I look would do, this is a residential A, what's that, sixty thousand square feet total? For the lots?
Um, residential, I saw it on.
Forty-five thousand?
Forty-five for A and sixty for B is, I can't, off the top of my head, I don't have it squared. So I just want the, the small train, well, the triangle lot, as long as it conforms to the lot size.
Yeah.
But everything's good. That would be the only thing that would hold anything up.
Right.
Otherwise, so.
Yeah, well, one thing too, we have experience with Paul, and Paul doesn't usually make those kinds of mistakes, so.
Yeah.
So we're sorry you can't, uh, we can't hear you as well, Paul, so. Because we'd, we'd love to have you commenting more on this than us, but I, I.
You got the body language.
Yeah, we, we, we can watch your body language and your smile. Talk with your hands.
I sorry, I was, I, I was gonna say, I, I ha, don't see any issues with this as an A and R.
Yeah, yeah. So would you wanna make a motion to approve it, and then we can, we'll have to have the people, the people that are here on this call to drop in on on Monday or Tuesday to Town Hall and, and, and sign the, the, I assume of Paul, you've already given them the Mylar, and, uh, the Mylar is in Town Hall for us to sign?
Yeah.
I think we did, yes.
I, I got, so, I think so.
Yeah, okay. We would have to, we would have to sign. So, uh, Lindsay's making the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor? Uh, well, I have to do it a roll call on a Zoom call, so Steve.
Hi.
Hi, Dave.
Um, I, I, the only problem I, I have with this, Walt, is I, I can't hear what, um, what Paul is saying. Um, how, how many would have to vote in favor for this to pass? I, I'm thinking about abstaining, just because I can't hear all of the information that's coming in.
We have to have three. It's fine.
Would there be three members able to vote?
Yeah, well, yeah, myself and Lindsay too, so, but, uh, so the three of us, um, Lindsay, you said yes?
Yes.
I'll say yes.
I'm not back to the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, and then we, we can talk, in fact, uh, why don't we, uh, uh, with regards to, uh, Dave's input into this, uh, perhaps, Dave, when we, uh, when uh, Rebecca can come, come, uh, confirm that the Mylar is downtown uh, in the land use office, perhaps you and I could meet one day down there to, to look at it face to face and talk through this. And, um, and then, because, uh, Lindsay, you'll have to drop by and sign it. I know, Steve, when do you come back?
Twenty-eighth, I'm in town.
Okay, so, um.
My point is, Walt, I, um, I, if, if I do choose to abstain, I don't wanna sink the whole deal. I, I'm about ninety percent on board with everybody else, and I wanna make sure that there's enough positive votes for it to go through if I do abstain. That's the point that I'm trying to make.
Well, there's enough positive votes for doing it, but we, if, if you end up signing on, on the Mylar, we'll have to you know, I wouldn't want you to sign it until you were a hundred percent sure.
Okay, I wanna sink the whole deal, that's, uh, that's, that, that, that's my point. I'm, I'm a team player, and I wanna see it go through, but.
You have any other reservations, Dave, that you'd like?
I, I couldn't hear what the applicant was saying clearly.
Okay.
That's, um.
But based on your knowledge of an A and R, feel comfortable with that, that this this proposed project meets the A and R that we're vote, that we're.
Yes, I do. When I had, I had spoken to Walt, um, earlier, there were some issues about ten or fifteen years ago when someone building a house up there. And they put a septic system in, they put a well in, they had a permit for a three-bedroom residential house, and when it came time to get their building permit, they, um, found out that it was on industrial property, but something has changed since then, and I, and I don't know what. They had to get a variance, um, at the time, um, the, the long and short of it, the guy had to, had to sue the zoning board in court, the judge overruled our decision. Um, I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't gonna be a problem. I don't want.
I can confirm that this parcel is zoned as residential.
Yeah, that's, I talked to Sarah today, she told me that. Um, I also had talked to Paul. Sarah sent me a copy of the map earlier today that I got to review in detail. And according to the maps that I got and what Paul and Sarah ver- verbally told me earlier this afternoon, this property is all in an RA zone, which I am fine with. If, if I could hear Paul clearly, I, I wouldn't even be thinking about abstaining, but if there's enough votes to go through, if you need my positive vote for this project to go through, I will give it to you. Let me put it to you that way.
Yeah, I mean, uh, uh, the big thing here is A and Rs, we don't really have, all we're doing is verifying it's not a subdivision. That's the bottom line of what we're doing. There's other, you know, there's some dimensional requirements we have to confirm. But the only thing in A and R, we really do have very little, um, uh, choice here, if it, it, it meets, and I'm confident to say that it isn't a subdivision, and confident to say that it meets the dimensional requirements.
Okay, after further discussion with you, Walt, then I can, um, I, I can get off the fence and vote.
Okay, so we're, uh, so we're there, and, and why don't, when we, when the Mylar, when we know the Mylar is downtown, uh, Rebecca, uh, just send us, shoot us an email, and, um, we'll each make our way down there to sign the Mylar. And, um, uh, because we'll have to sign that in order to sort of complete it for Paul. Um, and then, uh, and then perhaps, uh, Dave, when we do know the Mylar, you and I can coordinate and get there at the same time and sort of talk through it. Um, because this is, this is, um, not our usual A and R. Most A and Rs are just subdividing one piece of property into one or two lots. This subdividing a lot into, you know, seven lots, this is pretty, a, a pretty big one, and if it weren't on a private, I, I, we're on a public road like this, it would effectively be a subdivision of a type, so, um, so it is, it, it, it is not.
Just, just, you, just, uh, just, uh, fact that there's seven lots that were proven, doesn't make it.
That's right, it doesn't.
Going to pull up an example of the reason why the subdivision law was created, if you want to look.
Sure.
Um, so, uh, let's see if I can see on the screen again. So, out here, this is, uh, near where I used to work, there's a, there's a parcel where someone created some fake roads and, um, started selling lots that were all square, right in this area here. And people bought them thinking that they were buying a road in a little subdivision, and it would say, oh, it's near, just outside of Barstow, which was the town that I worked for. And then when they came with their piece of paper showing, hey, we own this awesome property, we'd say, well, there's no roads out there, there's no water, there's no sewer. You'll have to drill your own well, and there are one or two houses where people did drill their own wells, but that's what they were trying to prevent was um.
Yeah.
Essentially, people dividing pieces of, pieces of ground and sell it, giving them to people without any infrastructure or
Okay.
any way for someone to create, to fix it.
That's not, and that's not what we're dealing with.
No, no, but, yeah, and, and, but you can understand, it does give it a good example of why you have a subdivision control law, so that, you know, you, people can't just divide property up and sell it like that with no access to it.
Cause for some reason, not everyone double checks the property that they're purchasing, so they see it with a nice road on the map, and they think that that road exists. Sometimes it does, and sometimes it doesn't.
Okay, I, I, uh, I'd, I'd like to, this is good, we'll move on, we have a vote.
Uh, before we do that, there is a couple of, um, things I would like to say for clarification and for the record. Um, I do on occasion work with Paul Graz Engineering. Sometimes he engineers plans and I end up installing the septic system.
Yep.
Um, that is not happening right now as we speak. I have no working relationship with him right now, but I have in the past, and I would expect to have some in the future. But I don't have any ongoing work and relationships with him right now. I just wanted to say that for the record.
Thank you.
Also, the people in question, and I was looking at the plan this afternoon, Mr. And Mrs. Cormier, about five years ago, I installed the septic system for them at their house. Um, this, it has been a long time, they've had no complaints. I haven't spoken to them in a number of years since I was done the job. Um, they don't owe me any money, and I don't owe them anything either, but I just also wanted to state that for the record, that five years ago, I did install their septic system. And I have worked with the Graz Engineering before in the past, and I suspect that I will in the future at some point, but right now, we do not have a working relationship.
Thank you. As you can see, yep, go ahead.
Yeah, there's, there's just a form that you're supposed to fill out for that, Dave, before, like, if you, that ever comes up.
Yeah. I've had to do that before, but there was timeframes involved where if enough years had gone by, I was told I didn't have to, but I don't know if that's still the case. That statute could have changed since the last time I did that. And I'd be happy to sign that form when I, when I get back down to the Town Hall.
Yeah, Rebecca, would you pull that, uh, when, would you look into that and, and, and shoot that form off to Dave?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you.
Um, I really, um, if we're, if we're done with this one, Walt, I really kinda gotta go, cause I got previous commitments here.
I, I think we, uh, you're all right to go, because I think we're about ready to close the meeting up.
Excellent.
I think, uh, I think we covered virtually everything. The only thing I would say on the annual report is look for a draft of it to come your way via email, and all I would ask each of you to do is to take a read about it. And if you notice anything or have any edits to offer me, send it back to me, then I'll produce a final version. And that'll be the final version that we will, we will officially vote on at the next meeting. And other than, other than that, I think I covered everything else. Uh, we'll follow up on Bray Ave. Uh, I don't think, other than the bylaw review, I don't think we have any, uh, board reports that we need to deal with. And I know that both the February fourteenth, uh, meeting minutes are in my hands, and the March ninth meeting minutes, I think, are with Lindsay. And those we hope will be done, and we can vote on at the next, uh, at the meeting on the twenty-eighth, which will include a hearing for the bylaw review. So other than that, uh, next meeting is March twenty-eight. Um, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just wanna make sure, we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've all voted in favor of the A and R, so we're good on that item.
Yes, we are, yes, yes. Yep, I'm sure Lindsay was ahead on that, and, and, and we have an affirmative from Paul, just by his thumbs up. That helped us.
All right.
So, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Uh, so moved, it's a Zoom, Zoom meeting, so I have to go around the table. Steve, you good?
I'm, I'm, yep.
Dave, you good?
Yes.
Lindsay, you good?
Yes.
Walt, I'm good. We'll see you all later. Thank you, yeah, bye-bye.